Good evening to the Brookfield Selectmen's Meeting of Tuesday, March 6, 2018. Would you like to rise and join me in suiting the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the great Constitution, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I would like a motion to entertain, to approve the wire warrant from 228-18 for $330.
You want to do them all together or no?
We want to do them all.
Yeah, might as well.
And then we want to acknowledge the minutes and reports from-
Oh, no, just-
Oh, I only have one on.
Ooh.
I have three.
Yeah, there's three. You must have an early draft here. Take this, take this.
I have one right here, Karen.
Okay, alright, there we go.
There we go, now we're back.
We'll try it, alright.
Now we're back in business, yeah. Okay, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve a wire warrant from 228-18 for $330, approve an expense warrant for 3518, $3,600-
Three hundred?
$300,000, $62,600-
Ten dollars.
$610.89.
There you go.
I'm doing good tonight. And I also want to ratify a payroll warrant for 228-18 for $158,212.37.
You have a motion to that effect?
Okay, I'll second that.
Alright.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And I would like to acknowledge the minutes and the reports from other departments, from the ZBA from 8/1-18, 8/2-18, and the Recreation Committee for 2/1-18, and Cultural Council from 2/5-18.
You have a motion?
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We have some announcements. Tyler Wolin, District Aide to Senator Ann Goby, will be holding office hours at the Brookfield Town Hall from 2:00 to 3:00 p.m. Wednesday, March 21st. All are welcome. A regional WRTA public hearing will be held on April 12, 2018, at 6:30 p.m. at the Brookfield Congressional Church at 8 Common Street. This relates to possible changes to the WRTA route system. Area residents who ride the bus or those who wish to support this vital transportation link are encouraged to attend. And then I have one more announcement. The town expects restructuring with Bay State Financial to be completed soon, and we look forward to having an audit team come in soon after that. Tom Scanlon will do the audit for FY14 through FY17. Mr. Snyder, do you have anything you'd like to-
Yes, I do. Because of the snowstorm last Saturday, we had to cancel the open space meeting for Saturday morning. So we've now shifted to one final open space meeting that will be on March 14 at 6:30 here, and it'll be tied with the Egg Commission meeting that evening. So we'll have two activities. And then there was some confusion because of that happening, where we were going to talk bees on the March 14 meeting, when now not talking about bees until April.
Okay.
So, thank you.
Okay, I guess that's all. Next section, we'll move on to a brief section of public access. Does anybody have anything to say?
Evening.
Good evening.
What's, I see you have the police officers on in the Selectmen's meetings anymore. Could you tell me why that is now? They haven't been in the last five meetings.
Probably felt we haven't needed them.
Well, I mean, what's, you had a procedure that they were coming, now they're not coming. Could you just tell the people why they're not here now? What the reason is?
What the reason is?
Yeah, why are they not here?
They had, they were just calling and asking if we wanted to have a police officer up here, and we said yes. And like we tried to explain to you, Dave, before, you know, with everything that's going on here in the country today, you never know what's going to happen. So we've just decided now that they don't, we have no need for them.
Okay, sounds like, okay, it sounds like you're contradicting yourself, but, okay. What's the status on the salt, the use of salt in our town now? It's pure salt everywhere in all the back roads. What's the status on that? Why are we using salt? It's more expensive? It's bad for the wells? It's bad for plant life?
Mr. Snyder?
Bad for the swamps?
I would ask-
It's expensive?
I would ask that the administrative assistant take the concern down, and then we will ask the Highway Superintendent to respond to the question.
Alright, so can you put that on the next agenda?
Madam Chairman, that's your call.
Yep, we'll put it on the next agenda.
Okay, because salt is like triple the cost of sand, four times almost. What's our status on our special town meeting? Are we going to have one or we're not going to have one?
No, we're not going to have one.
Do we have our certification on both years of free cash yet?
No, I just read the announcement. We expect, I just read that announcement that we expect everything to be finished soon. And as soon as we have all of our, everything done up, we will let the audience, the townspeople know what's going on.
Why is it, why is this taking so long? I mean, I keep hearing we're going to be having our free cash certified, and then it doesn't happen.
So what we have is, we have from fiscal year '14 through '16 reconciled. We are presently working on the reconciliation of '17. With that, we will have an auditor audit the books, and that's what you read earlier.
Yes, that's what I just read. After that's all done, we said it's going to be completed soon, and after that, we're going to have, the books will all be audited by Tom Scanlon, who is our auditor.
And when will the free cash be certified?
Once the audit's complete.
Yeah, once, yeah, once the audit is complete, the-
Then it goes to the-
We didn't get behind on the reconciliation overnight. It's not getting fixed overnight.
No, it's something that has gone off the years.
We would have liked to have seen it happen faster, but it took a little while to dig into some of the records, and when it's complete, it's going to be complete, it's going to be complete right. So, you know, it's going to be done when it's done, at this point.
Yeah, I just read the announcement, Dave, so.
Okay, well, I'm just saying, we're two years behind on the free cash certification. That's, the state's got to certify it, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and you said that's going to be when everybody else gets their work done?
It has to get submitted?
Yeah.
It can't be submitted until the books are balanced?
Yeah, everything has to be submitted to the Department of Revenue, and you have to approve of it.
Okay, well, should be done. One thing I want to tell the audience here about this bus, if people that are taking the WRTA into Brookfield, they are actually talking about cutting the number 33 bus into Brookfield. So if you really, anyone that is out there that takes the bus, you should be down at the church, what's that, April 12?
March 22nd.
March 21st, is that what it is? Let me go back.
April 12.
Yeah, I was right. April 12 at 6:30. So if you take care about taking the bus, you better do your, you do your thing like I do here every night. You better get down there and talk, because they are talking about cutting the bus out. They're only going to go to East Brookfield, from what I've been told. So, little information on that. I got one other, one other thing, is what, what happened down at Tantasca? We had frozen pipes down there this winter, I haven't heard too much, and it was like a $400,000, $500,000 damage to the pipes? Can you find out about that for me, Linda?
Well, there have been many stories, Dave, in the paper about it.
Yeah.
They had some problems, I think it was with the sprinkler systems.
Right.
And I know that the gym, the gym's-
Regional School Committee has an open meeting, you're free to go find out.
Okay, I just think the general public should know we had that, I mean, if it's-
Oh, it's been in the paper, plenty of times.
Yeah, but it's, is, it has a, I guess I'm, I'll ask another question. Has the problem been corrected?
Yes, it had this, the problem, most of it has been corrected, and they have relocated some of the offices, and the gym is available now.
So that's, okay, so people can go back and rent the gym and the pool again?
Well, they were using the junior high. They transferred everything over to the junior high school.
Okay. Alright, very good. So you're going to get back on this salt?
Yes.
Next meeting, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Alright, thank you.
Okay.
This shouldn't take long, Linda.
Oh, okay.
I'm just looking for a little bit of guidance regarding the agreement for judgment regarding the properties at Lake Road and Allen Road. I know the, there's a 21-day period that we're expected, and I'm assuming I'm going to be doing that, to inspect the property and take reports, make reports, etc.
And Ron Wiseman's going to work with you on that.
He's going to come, okay. So all I'm expected to do is, or I'm going to do, is contact the owner, set up a timeframe?
Yep, set up a timeframe, set up a schedule.
Yeah.
When you go on the property, make sure you do appropriate documentation, whether that's photography, go ahead and submit, if you would, written reports to us regarding what the, what the condition of the property is and what kind of progress is being shown.
If there's any progress going on, etc. Yep, okay.
And you should also be working with the Conservation Commission, who has a responsibility to contact DEP.
Okay.
And an inspection needs to be taken place before March 21st.
For the DEP?
Yep. And if DEP can't, then the landowner is responsible to provide a certification that there are no hazardous wastes or other contaminants at the site.
From a license to a third party.
Right. Does the Concom individual know, is he in?
He's right here.
He's right there.
Mr. Cleveland's right here.
Do they know, Kenny?
Yes.
Have you had any response yet from the DEP on that?
This morning.
Great.
Did, after we had discussed it, did you get a response after that?
After.
Remember we discussed it this morning?
They had a DEP call.
Oh, so good you've heard.
So we're just waiting for their back machine to discuss, and she's already-
Okay.
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 Thank her, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Nick. Okay. The next thing, we have our hearing at 7, but we are going to move up the rest of our agenda. Well, we have, at the meeting, we have a minute. And this one is from, to sign, to approve a CASC grant application, and Mr. Snyder is going to explain that.
So this is the output from the open space work that we've been doing. So we've had the open space dialogue meetings to understand what we would want to put in an open space plan and to redo it. So what we now have the opportunity to do is to have CMRPC actually, well, they've written the grant application such that we can have the open space, if this grant recommendation is approved, grant request is approved, we would then have the ability to have the open space program done by CMRPC. What's important in this is that they wanted 20% or $1,600 roughly of matching monies. And so what, though it's talking about the town having a responsibility for that, we have an agreement with CMRPC that through either direct technical assistance or in-kind services writing the grant, that we would not have any cost to the town for the writing of the open space.
Excellent.
So I thought it was a good negotiation.
It is a good negotiation. I thank you for doing that.
So with that, I'd like a motion, I'd provide a motion that we sign the grant request for the open space grant.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Alrighty. So is it down here, Karen, on the tree?
It should be Chief Executive Officer.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Yep. So that's $8,000 that the town didn't have to spend?
Well, that's great.
And it opens up more.
Well, and it can serve some more services for the town, potentially.
Yeah, absolutely. Well, it's, it provides a channel for additional monies for the campground, for example.
Well, that's good. It's money we didn't have before, and money that we can get in is welcomed.
Exactly. So Karen, do you want me to take that, take care of that?
You can just take it if you want.
Yeah. Yeah, let me steal a folder from you.
See what's on, see what's on the last page there, I thought it says something, Kate, if you want.
Oh, oh, something else.
Yeah, I just wanted to check anything else that's in the folder, because I thought it says something.
Ooh, wait a minute, yes, I see.
Yes. Okay, that goes with the table.
Great, I'll take care of that. No, this, this one I, that one I got.
And now, this is, the next one on our agenda is to sign special use permits, and I'll read them on, have a motion. These are special use permits approval forms for South Pond, made by the Mass Bath Alliance, and that will be 325-18. And then we have another one, will be 71-18, that'll be on Quabag Pond, and that will be by the Friday Night Baths. Those are the two we have. I'd like to have a motion-
Do you have that motion?
Second.
And for the court deciding.
Can I borrow these a second?
Yes.
As we, so we're now up to over 800 different people that are going to be using our ponds through 2018.
Yeah.
And that, I didn't, as part of the open space thing, we did in fact make a note of that.
It seems more and more all the time are coming in.
Yep.
The next one is, this is another, oh, it's fine. Alright. And the next one is an appointment to the Cultural Council. It says, Dear Good Morning Karen, I wrote to Karen, Chris Garrett of 181 Fistale Road came to our cultural meeting last evening and has decided to become a member. So if you could get him appointed and let me know when he can be sworn in, and then that would be great. And I'll have to find out if his name is Chris or Christopher. Have a wonderful day, Jeanne Lyte. I'd like to make a motion to appoint Christopher Garrett to the Cultural Council for the term expiring on June 30, 2018.
You have that motion?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now, the next one is, we have a resignation. To the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Brookfield, it is with great sadness and frustration that I am tendering my resignation from the Advisory Board of the Town of Brookfield. I originally wanted to learn more about the town and felt my background in accounting would be of value to this committee. My being new to the community afforded me the opportunity to get to know the inner workings of various departments without any preconceived notions of personalities or issues. All of my encounters with the different departments have been a great pleasure, and the people are very dedicated to doing what is best for Brookfield. The Advisory Board needs to reorganize it at full committee, not just one person. The members should have a voice and an opinion and be able to act as one united group in the best interest of the town's taxpayers. My advice would be to have a handbook on the duties and responsibilities of the chair and all of its members. Remember, no man is an island. Sincerely, Maureen Moreno of 36th Street here in Brookfield.
Motion to approve, see that, accept that, with regret.
Aye, second. I, I'd like to, it's a regret, because she was just doing a very good job of being somebody new here in the community. So, all in favor?
Aye.
And Karen, if you'll send her out a letter of appreciation? Okay. Okay, now we have, a public hearing is going on for the Tantasca Regional School Committee budget for the 2018-2019 budget will be held on Tuesday, March 20, 2018, at 6:30 p.m. at the Tantasca Regional Junior High School Cafeteria. A copy of the proposed budget is available at the town, at the Office of the Superintendent of Schools at 320A Brookfield Road, Fistale, Mass. Okay, now this one is-
They removed a diesel tank. It was contaminated.
Okay, this is from Riley Talbot in Oakville, and what they're doing is the release of a oil tank at 80 Lake Road in Brookfield. And that's over at the Oak Home Realty Trust.
They discovered it, they remediated it.
That's good. And then, I guess that's it, for that's concerned. And do we have anything under, others to bring up?
No, I think we have nine minutes.
Okay, so we're going to adjourn now at 6:50, and reopen the meeting at 7 for our hearing from Mr. Home. We'd like to, to further, we'd like to reconvene the meeting, and before we start, the notice of the public hearing, Sharon has something to say under the-
I should have put this on the agenda, but I didn't think of it. As you may or may not know, Cable Access has charge of the Town Facebook page, listed as Town of Brookfield on Facebook, and one of the duties that I have is posting the link to the tapes of the meetings on that. The rest of the duties were assumed very graciously and on a volunteer basis by Lindsay Home, and she's been doing a superb job. In addition, she also set up an independent community page, Brookfield Mass Community, which she is totally in charge of. Both of them are non-political, but the community page, this is not formally affiliated with the town, she can have things like Mercantile Wednesday, where people can post, you know, effectively advertisements or links to their businesses. Lindsay asked me by message if, now that we have a new website, if we shouldn't discontinue the official Town of Brookfield page and post announcements and links to the videos on that instead? Because she is a little out straight managing two Facebook pages. So I wanted to just get the board's opinion on this, so that I can bring it back to the full committee and all three of us, and, and discuss how we're going to go about this. One of the obstacles I see is that none of the three of us really know how to post things on the website, and even if we did, we weren't sure where, where those things should go, if, depending on the genre, if they should go on separate pages, or if they should be like one page, effectively a copy of the Facebook page or what. So I'm not asking for answers tonight.
Just asking a question.
Right, and I'd appreciate the feedback, and it can be in the form of an email to the committee, or, and that would be care of Kay Urcola at BrookfieldMA.us, he's the chair. And any feedback you can provide, and any preferences you may have about where, if we do use the town webpage, where that information should go, and how we make the public aware of it, is, is really appreciated.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I like the left page, the Facebook page.
You like the Facebook page?
I do. I do.
Very good.
I can do Facebook.
We're going to-
It pops up when you're on it.
Yeah.
And it's, you're not actually going to search for, you're not plugging in a website.
The problem is Lindsay doesn't want to manage, she can probably find someone else.
Maybe somebody else.
Maybe we can find it, yeah, maybe we can find another volunteer specifically for the Facebook page.
Alright, we're going to open the he, the hearing now. Town of Brookfield Board of Selectmen will conduct a public hearing on the application of David Home, Home Auto Group, LLC, for a Class II license to buy, sell, and exchange or assemble secondhand motor vehicles or parts thereof in accordance with the provisions of Chapter 140 of the Massachusetts General Laws. Said hearing will be conducted on Tuesday, March 6, 2018, at 7:00 p.m. in the Banker Hall, 6 Central Street, Brookfield, Mass. Board of Selectmen Linda M. Lincoln Chairman, Clarence R. Snyder, Vice Chair, and Beth L. Koffler, Clark. Good evening, Mr. Home.
Good evening.
Would you like to explain a little bit about your, your business that you're going to have?
Basically, it's going to be a classic car for sale business. I don't plan on having it getting too large, a couple cars at a time. I was kind of doing it personally, and having to go register the cars and get the titles and all the process. Instead, I just wanted to get a second class, second used car license, was it Class II?
Class II.
And, you know, do it properly through town, and basically run the business out of an office in my house, and apparently A1 is going to allow me to put a couple cars down there.
So that's where the business will be registered from?
Would be registered at my house.
Yes, but I mean, if you're going to be selling them low down there, you'll have to have-
Yeah, I would bring the cars to my house and possibly, and detail them, no automotive repairs whatsoever. I only buy, you know, pretty pristine cars, and so that's, that's the way I want to do it.
Is the way we have it here in the license, it says 40 Allen Road for office reconditioning and 26 West Main Street for display of cars for sale.
That's correct.
Okay.
And that's consistent with how the Planning Board's permit reads as well?
Right.
Do we have any discussion here with the board?
Or additional input?
Any input? And do we have any input from anybody here in the audience on this?
I just, I just had a question, I just wanted to make clear that there, this, we're not talking about power tools and repairs, or sanding, or repainting, or that, of that nature?
Right.
That it's not repaired, I mean-
No, it's not going to be an auto body shop, or-
That's what I was concerned.
You know, it's nothing like that, nothing at all. It's, it's basically buffing a car out, or, you know, detailing the interior, detailing the engine compartments, things like that.
But detailing and cleaning.
Clean, basic cleaning, yeah.
And it states right in, the Planning Board permit-
That's right.
Yeah, the Planning Board permit states very specifically that there's no automotive or auto body repair will be conducted at the address. But there's no service bay, that's, that's part of this, so, you know.
I do have a three-bay garage, and, you know.
Basically, it's the garage itself.
That was my concern. Thank you.
Any more questions from the board?
So, so the used car lot is going to be un-named, that's where the cars will be kept?
Yeah.
And the rest is going to be in your office? The cars, the actual car being sold will be un-named?
That's what the permit says.
Yeah, that's what the permit says.
Well, I'm just asking to make, make it clear, that's all.
I mean, it might be one in my driveway between pulling in and out in the process of detailing, but other than that, you know.
Any more?
So we get to approve, is that based on the input?
I would like a motion to approve this, these car licenses for Mr. Home.
Do you have that motion?
Second.
On the table?
Aye. Good luck.
Well, thank you very much.
And we'll wave the fee on that.
Alright, I appreciate that very much. It was funny, the first meeting that we did have, which we all know about, it was, all the neighbors showed up in my behalf, and, and they're asking me for this meeting, do we have to come again? And it was like, I don't think so.
That's nice that we said.
You know, yeah, it was, it was, one was, one was joking, saying, I really want to know why we're going to go three times, but it was, it was funny.
Fair enough.
We appreciate it, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And so as far as pulling the permit and things like that, with the paperwork, how does that, how do I proceed with that?
We get a license now, so you can operate.
Right.
Right.
You're bonded, and you have-
And I have the bond, and I have my business set with the state already.
So you have the permission. We'll go till December 31st, and then you'll reapply next year.
Karen, do we have a copy of this?
No.
Oh, okay.
If you have a copy, and then-
I'll do it right now.
I give the original to you, in case you want to frame it.
And I have-
Yes, I do want to frame it, thank you.
Mr. Home, have you gone to see the town clerk to register business?
Um-
And get a business certificate from him?
So, that's, that's another thing, okay? That's, that's what I need to know. Town clerk, because I'm new to this myself, so I'm-
Certification to file.
So I go to Mike and, and to-
No, that's from the planning.
Okay, alright, cool. Alright, cool. I just saw Mike's name.
He'll be in after, I think he's in at 5:00, after 2:00 tomorrow.
Yeah, because it's a, it's a late day.
Yeah, I'm actually going on a little vacation at 2:45 a.m. this morning, so I won't be back until following week. Nice to get this done and squared away, though. Thank you.
Happy to see you.
It's a long time coming. But it's, it's happened, so that's great.
That's great, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good night.
Good night. Good night.
So, I'll make a motion that we move into executive session.
Under, under number six, yeah.
Under number six?
Yes, to consider the, no, is it two? No, which one?
Or is it two?
Negotiation.
Two, on negotiations, under number, under number two, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation of negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. Lincoln, aye?
Snyder, aye.
Kofflin, aye.
Okay, and then we will adjourn out of the executive board session to go back to adjourn out of our regular session.